Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March I want City Company. As you can hear, a little raspy voice tonight, I'm gonna do this, I can't get through this thing. capable mayor, Pro Tim Bell Sherrill next to me said, read some things if I uh leave my voice so big here. We do welcome everyone here tonight. I will note that council member Brittany Brown, she is absent tonight, she is excused due to being now out of town for all the various medical treatments. And I will say that I know we have a few people here for various presentations, different things. We encourage everybody to stay from the whole meeting, but certainly understand when people want to leave early and do other things. So if you choose to leave early, we just ask that you do it out the bag on the side as quietly as possible with me. We go on after all the presentation. So at this time, I would like to come along, council member Gary Sigmund, do lead us in our indication.
Gracious God, as we come before you today to discuss business at the city, we ask for your guidance and will. You are the source of all knowledge and understanding. Therefore, we seek your direction and the decision to make you possible. Now, for us to listen closely to one another with open hearts and mind, may we not be quick to judge or criticize, but we stand safe to understand different perspectives. As we pray that you give us the ability to make honest decisions for the greater good. Please watch over our power leaks, rescue public works, and destruction for you as they respond to the needs of our city with you. May our words and actions be guided by their love and purpose, in your name we pray.
Thank you, Gary. And if this sounded like prayer, I also, Mayor Pro Tim Bell Sherrill, please unplay the lead of the sound. Thanks, my right.
And we live in the spirit of God, from the highest state of America, to the free vote, which is saved, one nation, for God. In this, there be the best as well.
Thank you, Del. Okay, council, as in the packet emailed everyone late last week, you have the consent agenda. It contains many items to generate consent agenda. And unless there's any additions or corrections, I entertain motion to accept the consent agenda. So thank you. Motion by last second, by being all in favor. Here it is. Right, next up, elected officials reports. I'll spare everybody tonight, I have no report. And I'll defer to any other witness, anyone having a wish to report on. All right, moving on. Now's our time in the meeting for the public comment section. Anyone that is here, you're welcome to approach a podium to my right and speak on any issue that you have in your mind. We just ask that you state your name and your address before we speak. We can move on. We have three presentations to see. First up, I'm gonna introduce you to, and give the floor to Ingrid Kellner, who is with the Arts, she gives an arts cultural. I might get the word down here, I've been able to talk and say the wrong words. Ingrid and her entourage here will give a presentation with public county cultural and process. And Ingrid, you want to introduce everybody with your proof of that?
Yeah, well, actually, it's just John Pope here, he was served on our leadership team for the cultural plan. And he's gonna actually speak first, but first I'm gonna hopefully play this video out like the sound.
Okay, I want to thank the council for being here on behalf of Arts Culture Kataba. As the cultural arm for the city of Patawa County, Arts Culture Kataba led countywide planning effort that resulted in a ten year strategic cultural plan. We are grateful for the time this evening, shared it to make your undertaking. You would have, I think, thus seen in the video, which essentially shows you the new branding. And many of you have probably already seen it, emailed and so forth, that have come out since, since the release of that. We had a lot of help through this process. If you happen to fill out a survey, which I think many people did, it went out to thousands and thousands and thousands of people. Now, I know the city has participated in trying to get that out through citizens of Claremont. We appreciate that. Thank you for your participation and that, the contribution of that information was invaluable to the process. We're especially grateful to Dean Proctor, who is State Senator of Security and Preparation for our whole innovation and duty research. Our weekly for each week, we were board of directors gave a lot of extra time, especially those who served on the full leadership team. The friends that we have, going on that West Pemont County Governments, serve as the official data partner in collecting all information into the colony. The leadership team is made up of leaders in business, culture, education, government, health, human services, philanthropy, relief, and media, tourism. And David Lee, who, Mayor Sean Brown, our both, they're representatives of Claremont on the leadership team. We engage the services of.
Diane Motta-Ross.
Motta-Ross. Consulting to conduct the research and compile the internal strategic plan and operationalized cultural document. Alan Jackson from exactly creative and local historian Richard Heller, put together all public facing documents, which they can get on the website, arts, night, the Kataba, night, the. Is that right?
Yeah.
They also work as loyal county government department to ensure that any recommendations coming out of this plan were relevant and actionable. Heather Powell and Daisy Brown were excellent partners in this effort, special thanks to Heather and Daisy and Aldo, and also to the city of Claremont for this corporate and jobs for dollars in the process. And finally, our vibrant cultural organizations that created individuals did line share the work on community lives and meetings, which is vital in data. And that's a, that's a, the union, the, the project. These organizations also provide a picture of that particular richness of our cultural team, both in its presentation and the planned document. Not only do arts and cultural organizations, they provide quality of life by giving our citizens opportunity to be creative, be educated, and expand. They're important to our economy. As you, as you all may recall, when we presented to you last year, our most recent economic impact study founded arts and cultural nonprofit organizations at the cost of millions of contributions more than sixty-three million dollars in economic income. Knowing that arts and culture are good for our quality of life and for our economy, we then wanted to know how to improve overall. We hired a consultant in August twenty twenty-three, and by September, we established a strategic plan for leadership team. An internal scan of arts culture of the Kataba, one-on-one interviews, and online assessment were completed by all the board and staff. A three sixty assessment before was being shared with the board and the agenda. In January twenty twenty, we launched a community life process convened in sixteen member leadership team of arts culture membership, non-art, fund contributors, individuals, creative workers, and integrated public. Thirty virtual and online meetings involving more than two hundred and fifty-five individuals were being held with the county and municipal leaders and representatives of arts, culture, business, community organizations, economic development, schools, libraries, parks, including youth services, catering services, and others. With the help of West Pemont County Governments, four different surveys were created and distributed. The four surveys were quality of life, public opinion survey, a youth quality of life survey, a survey for arts cultural organizations, and a creative workforce survey. Four thousand seven hundred and forty-six responses were collected over a city period and submitted to West Pemont County Governments, with three thousand eight hundred and seventy-four Kataba-based respondents, which represented two percent of the county's population. We also managed to get one percent representation from all of the post community graphics. We then had more than one hundred community leaders participating in work sessions, debating, and group doing their recommendations. And finally, the board of directors reviewed and ratified the cultural plan at the new board meeting. This process presented a new direction for arts culture Kataba with new vision and mission segments, and four strategic priorities to guide all organizations. Our executive director, Ingrid Keller, will now tell you about it, so we can talk.
Thank you, John, and we're so happy to have both John and Sean serve on our leadership team. I do want to mention that one percent did absolutely include the two eight six one zeros, if that is what they are not. So we made sure we got one percent of residents here as well. This research taught us a lot about our community, so we learned that our greatest weakness by far, as you can see from this chart here, is that people in our community have a hard time finding out what arts and entertainment is actually happening. Forty percent of the respondents to our public opinion survey said it is not easy. It is difficult, or it is very difficult to find out what is going on. We realized this is not a problem that is exclusive to our industry. This is a societal issue, because people get information in so many different ways, and it's just drastically changed. So while we realize this, we also feel like we have to try something to solve it. So our first priority is to expand awareness, and I apologize, this lot's kind of loaded, but it's all the systems. We want more participation, and we want arts and culture to be everywhere. To do this, we will work closely with our local governments to incorporate the arts in their efforts to boost community vitality and enhance sense of place and contribute to livability. So as a start, we created an asset map to level set where each municipality is and where it wants to go. And Jason Brown and Heather Powell both very instrumental in helping us start and create that asset map. We will help develop a central information system to promote entertainment opportunities. And this is the initiative that we are tackling first. Right now, we're in the discovery and development phase, but by July, we really hope that we are going to be rolling out a new software application that's going to help us. We also will work with partners to develop a volunteer directory, and we will enhance our online directory of arts and culture, individuals, organizations, resources, and venues. So the success of this mission, or this initiative, rather, means greater awareness of arts and culture increases, participation with both residents and visitors, and then local government partnerships build more welcoming, safe, and attractive communities, and residents love where they live. Arts have the capability to change lives for the better, but people have to know about them, which is why expanding awareness is so important. Our second priority is to reach more residents through strategic partnerships. We will collaborate with key community partners to see that creative opportunities are available to more residents of all ages everywhere. So most of our organizations focused in the past has been on branding, and we've concentrated mostly on serving the cultural organizations. But we know that art happens outside of traditional circles, and we want to better connect our artists, our crevices, and our cultural organizations with the greater community. So we want to work with youth and aging service providers on arts and cultural programming and elevate parks and libraries as destinations for arts and culture experiences. We will also strengthen the relationships of arts and culture relations, of arts and culture organizations with area schools, practice intentional community building, and grow the value of arts and culture in the workplace. With all of this, plus expansion to help human services, sacred and faith communities, and local government, we see a lot of potential for arts and culture to reach more people. Our third priority is to continually improve our arts and culture offerings. And we want to do this both through our grant making and beyond, which is a priority shift in how we've operated in the past. So we will build and develop best practices to guide and strengthen both local artists and cultural organizations. We're currently working to refresh our grant making structure in ways that incentivizes operating and promoting excellence. And we want to reward those who increase community connectivity and reach. We are going to explore the creation of a shared service model that's, that will give us greater efficiency across the sector. And we'll also explore the creation of programs that enhance community life and further ensure a welcoming atmosphere for both current residents and new immigrant communities. Success in this priority means improved professionalism, quality, access, and relevance in offerings that attract greater investment, and expanded grant making and stewardship that strengthens our entire sector's capacity. So those first two priorities are more community-driven and outward-facing outside of our core organizations and our industry. The third priority that I just told you about does turn more inward towards the sector itself. And our fourth priority focuses more on arts culture Kataba itself to be able to ensure that we can operationalize this plan. So this work priority is to build capacity and investment in the arts and culture sector. We need capacity and sustainability and personnel expertise, experience, and funding to implement this plan. So we have to keep our systems up to date, both operating and administrative. We want to strengthen our governance effectiveness and productivity. And the new action that comes out of this plan is the establishment of a stewardship committee to oversee the entire grant making portfolio of arts culture Kataba, that's being led by our board member Jamie Treadaway. And also, we're refreshing our fund development structure to grow investment in arts and culture as a whole. And that is being co-chaired by Dean Proctor, who we mentioned earlier, who led and got some appropriation to be able to do this research, as well as Kitty Barnes, who's currently serves on our executive team. And so if we're successful in all areas of this fourth priority, then we're going to be widely known and respected as a valuable community resource, which we want very much. Arts and culture will be recognized as an asset that's foundational to community livability and vitality. And we will also have increased investment that fuels cultural play success and sector sustainability. Arts councils like Arts Culture Kataba contribute to vibrant, healthy communities and maintaining quality of life. So ensuring our success is critical to ensuring the success of our plans, priorities, which just again, to recap, are to expand awareness, reach more residents through strategic partnerships, continually improve arts and cultural offerings, and build capacity and investment in the culture sector. So to further solidify this, we actually have endorsements from key leaders and organizations who believe this plan has the potential to impact the quality of life for our residents. And we're excited to be entering now the early implementation stages, mostly in discovery right now, as I mentioned, that central information system. So our priority right now is to become the source of events and entertainment for the community. So we're building out our network and resources right now to make that happen. And I promise we're going to be back to share that resource with you later. It's, it's really exciting, and we're excited to take it on. So thank you for the time to share this work that you all helped to support, and especially the citizens of Claremont with the responses to these surveys. I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
I will ask one thing, and I think it answered me, I may have seen an answer on the slide, but I'm just gonna ask you from a pretty perspective. The staff, hey, I know you have a ton of them here to do the line share of a lot of work, obviously. But you're dealing this with basically four staff members.
Yes. Yes. Yes, and actually, the, one of those staff members is part-time, Palsie Graff. Kinder Olaford and Chris Coffey were just recently made full-time to help try to get this plan up and running. We are hoping to expand that, in particular with a partnership manager, for the, for that calendar and that system to really work. We have to have two sides. We have to have people internally who are gathering the information from all of our cultural partners, like making sure that all the events for Claremont get on that calendar. So that's a key piece, and that takes a lot of work. Anybody who ever has tried to manage that knows. And then the other big thing is going to be the marketing piece to make sure people know about it. So we want it to go out on water bills in municipalities, so the citizens know, this is where I can find out what's happening, without having to worry about a murder. We want them to know, like, if they want to know what's happening this weekend in town county, they can go to that, to that site and see.
And we, and we certainly feel we're paying on, on communication and getting stuff out, because we deal with that too. We are always attempting to get word out, and, and are always looking at different things. But I'm, I'm sure as Heather has told you, we'll be happy to share anything on our social media. Not that we have the end-all-be-all coverage, but everyone will get it.
Exactly, and to your point, collaborating and collectively being able to share that information is key. And we really discovered that with this plan. I mean, fact that forty percent of our community, I mean, that's a scary number to us. I mean, that's scary, it should be scary for any community, but nobody feels like they have a reliable source to go to for that. And, you know, we've looked at a couple different ways that we could make partners to carry this burden. But we just feel like we're the best, we're the best organization to do it. After kind of all the research, we know what we've seen in other communities that's working really well. Cincinnati's a really great format that we're interested in. And so we're finding, just, you know, after lots of research, that we think we can, we can do that, and that's what the community needs. So we want to respond to that. And not only did the, you know, the people call for it, but our organizations are begging for it as well, that have been our constituents that we've been serving more directly. They all want this as well, they want a broad-based marketing plan, and they want that master calendar that everyone can kind of collectively work on. And a lot of people tried it, and not.
And a lot of people don't understand, like, what are the sides? And you don't have to go back to everything, one side, and it's all people, dark. And that's not something you would typically think in arts and cultural. I understand that part of it, that I think, but that's just one thing that you mentioned, though. Because that's not something you traditionally think of as.
Yeah, we want to be arts and entertainment forces. So we want all the migratory activities to be on that calendar. We're gonna partner, if somebody wants to go to the crawdads and they find out that a show's happening at the theater downtown at Claremont Days, same weekend, they're gonna find out about that in the same source. Interested in, in going to, and, you know, social isolation is a real thing. And, and a lot of people in our community have suffered through that. And we know that the arts and culture organizations here are bringing people together, it's happening in your libraries, it's happening in the arts. But people have to know about it, and so we kind of try to really bridge that gap somehow.
And we agree, pollination.
Yeah.
Spread the word.
Yes.
Just any other questions or? Thank you, thank you, John.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, our next presentation, I guess you could kind of say it does, it'll be all. Is from our own Heather Powell, our Claremont Events Marketing Presentation. How are you, Billy?
Um, hey, so this is the twenty twenty-five, the Claremont event. This is our event calendar for the year. It has eight community events on it, and the one not on there is for the Friday breakfast, in fact, is just for the Claremont event. So this is the eight, this is the flyer that you're gonna be seeing certainly circulating around on the block to the businesses downtown, get that out there, community creations who will have coffee tonight. They said they would put it out for me, you'll start to see this around. This will be the main, the main one that people go off. And then just the individual flyers I have here. Is our Easter egg clip, it is April twelve. It will kick off on Friday night, this season. And that's at the park. And then following that, we'll have our first Friday night concert series, which is the Night Moves Band, which I'm sure that you guys know that they've been like a staple over there in the days. So we're excited to have them out as their own. So after that, we have D thirteen F sellout, they were also at Claremont Days this past year. And we got really good feedback on them, and then secondly, yeah, the seventeenth of the year. So we're really excited about the fans for the concert series. This is the retirement breakfast that we're gonna have on for anyone who's retired, from the community of Claremont, from the police department, police force, family, the fire department, we still have that, that invitation, and we'll hold every minute for them. And then we did move Night in the Park last year, so it is again on the morning again. We have the Catalinas this year as our, our live band, and fireworks, of course. Somehow, I'm gonna put it to kick a ball for it, I'm not sure yet, but maybe the, I just, I can just open it a little bit, that should be fun. And then Claremont Day, we have all of our bands booked. So Too Much Libya is gonna be our main on Friday. And then Saturday, we have the Never Be, Feather Room, which is Daniel and fifteen at Eagle. You might never know where on, um. Yeah, that one. They're on their, and they're local, so we're excited that we got them, and then we'll get them out in three minutes. And then we also have our gospel band, which is going to go away, and Heart to Heart, which they, they took a couple years off, but they're back. And then following that, we have a concert that we're planning with, David. And then we have our senior breakfast, which I've also talked to Jamie Frye at Claremont Elementary, and then I'm sure I did get the kids to be there when they were small, at the beginning of the year, I think that should be fun. And then we have our Christmas party that all of that happened there. And this is event morning. As you heard Ingrid say, it's forty percent of all of Kataba County, it is hard to get that information out there. Currently, we have our social media, this is our website, Facebook, Instagram, and X. And then you'd see our roadside banners that we put up a month in advance for that, the newspaper, we do the O N E and W N E for data records. And we always put it on the newsletter, which goes out to all of the citizens on the back of their water. What new, what we're gonna try, is I've reached out to W N E and W H A Y. And so we're gonna have some radio commercials and some show spots. So I'll be coming to you guys to, to see if you guys want to be on the radio for me.
I have past experience.
Okay, great. And also our website, we're gonna try to push the, the email list that it is capable of. A lot of people are, are ready to for that, so I'm gonna start picking that out for that day that I can. We're gonna start partnering with the churches, I've already made some contact with the local churches to get into their voting. But when we have events, I've also asked them if they need to bring something to us already, or do we decide to go with the church members? Like I said with other businesses, we're gonna do the, the over the road fan. That, the fun that got away from, because it was like side fans, it was kind of whole. And then we'll have right way in here, and try to get on that master event line, and so they can help us. And when I say other municipalities, I mean, we already partnered with, you know, let's be, like, the Halloween, but I also want to be, I've talked to Tyler about it, if we can push each other's needs. They're never really on the same day, they're a little different, but we're, I think we can start pushing each other's needs to try and get the message out to, to everybody and others. And then coming soon, we've talked about an E and B board outside of City Hall, centered with the, what's the word? So that, that should help as well.
I'm, I'm very excited about the board, I know we talked about, and especially the budget that's coming up and everything. I'm really, I'm, I'm very excited about that, it's gonna give you the ability, whoever, you know, a mixture of people, updated, changing, fast-paced changes, announcements, I mean, I, I think it's really, I think, I mean, it's not the end-all-be-all answer, but I think it could be a game changer. It's definitely not perfect. Sure. And I know the, the churches, and that's, do. the, the churches and, and that's, do everything you can, like you're doing on the churches. I know there's a few churches in the city here that are in some transitions with pastors and things like that. So I know that those are sometimes tough because you got, people transition in and out of them. It's hard for you to get consistency, you know, with what you're dealing with at various times. But, but I appreciate what you do there. Definitely any other comments or questions? Yeah, we're excited. And, and, and what everybody's got to understand, you know, there's nothing we charge for. You know what I'm saying? I mean, it's not like, every, every man we meet, you'll be heard of a hundred percent free. Bands, I mean, there's nothing, it's not like you go by ticket at the door to get anything at all. Free for free, like, so, so, uh, and that's the great thing about it. What we can do to help spread the word and there's, just like Andrew had mentioned before. And we appreciate what you do. Thank you very much. Okay. And probably the most mundane of the presentations that you're going to hear tonight. I would like to call our city manager, President Brown. He's going to give us a budget presentation.
Well, I'm the editor as well, so bear with me for my voice to get out. Um, just want to thank everybody for being here. Uh, what we're going to do tonight is a general fund budget update for the city. From the department heads and most of the other departments and city staff have been working on budget over the last couple of months. Uh, we're starting to kind of see the, the outlines of what this looks like. We're also starting to see some of the areas that we're going to have a little focus on over the next couple of years. And I've had one-on-ones with each member of the council just to kind of get some of their priorities, some of the things that, that they would like to see in the budget this year and beyond. And also just to make sure that they understood, uh, some of the things that we'll be placing in the next couple of years. So none of this is forthcoming as a surprise to any of you. Uh, primary purpose is to keep council informed, but also to receive guidance and counsel for our direction, terms of revenue expenditures. Uh, like I said, we've already made good divisions lately and the department heads have submitted their initial budget requests where about twenty-five, twenty-six. So what you'll see during the course of the preparation, I promise, looking at the agenda, we, we're going to go fast. Um, what you're going to see on this is the initial version. It does include all of this stuff, whatever the name of the recommended budget, this council will aware. Uh, we're a little late on getting our revenue projections here at Claremont because of our business partner situation with, uh, the International Business Park. Uh, so therefore, you know, we, we kind of massage this late into May, uh, before we're ready to actually, uh, settle on some numbers. But one of the things that I, I always want to do is be early and set their priorities and counsel them to channel that one for you. Let's discuss revenue. Fund balance is June thirtieth of last year, which is our last, um, Valerie likes to tell me that that is true for exactly thirty seconds at midnight on July the first, and then it changed, uh, and that is true. Plus five point four million dollars, uh, as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Council has already made significant investment in the Federal National Rail Park, which is five hundred thousand dollars for roadway construction. And we've also had roof and HVAC with there, both fire and police departments. So that's utilized a total of about six hundred twenty-nine thousand without a mount, oh, it's June thirtieth. And what I always like to say is, keep in mind that a lot of this, you know, as long as your projections come in at or above where you projected them, and your expenditures come in at or below where you projected them for the, for the next year. Uh, I don't worry as much with these large numbers at the beginning of the year, uh, especially when you've got things where one-time costs like with the rail park. And well, tax rate currently stands at point four one seven five per one hundred. Uh, the tax rate equivalent, which if you put on one thing on the tax rate, is seventy-eight thousand five hundred fifty-three dollars. I remember when I got here, the T R E was forty thousand. Um, so it has almost doubled, um, since twenty eighteen. Uh, there are no major national expansions expected in the coming year. And as we know, when you're as dependent on this as far as where we are, uh, that can tighten the environment. I know that no work at council has some expansion that should be beginning this year, but we're probably not going to actually get back home until next year. And it's, it's small time for me about, uh, investment. Um, so really what we're doing right now is we're looking at rail parking, trying to there, um, dispatching all business. Sales and use taxes, we'd also see sales and use taxes stabilized and showed a little bit of growth during the current fiscal year. This will also inform recommendations made for the FY twenty-five, twenty-six. Uh, we came to you last year as one of the few municipalities that had a boom and bloom attitude for sale of used taxes. Everybody else was saying we were going to go into the ten to thirteen percent increase range. Uh, Valerie and I said about five, it was five. So we are, we are doing well with our projections and a lot of other things we're struggling with, uh, to, to use our sign of balance, make up those, those projections. Here's a visual for our tax rate, and, and I always try to mention this. We are the third lowest in the county. Maiden, uh, is the lowest high ever been in sack loads, and we're at four one seven five. In general, when you look at tax rates amongst full-service cities, we are considered full service. They are indirectly proportional to your population. The larger the city, generally the lower the tax rate. You have more people to put, put upon. Uh, for example, City of Charlotte, we're at thirty seven. Um, you've got, uh, small municipalities, uh, around us that have tax rates into the low sixes, um, because they're trying to provide full service, uh, in a small population. Claremont is incredibly beneficial with the International Business Park. The International Business Park drives that tax rate and gives you the ability to do what we do. And that's one of the reasons that council has always, uh, looked to strengthening that business park and continues to look to strengthen and expand it with the International. Oh, and by the way, um, this does represent the second year since revaluation. One of the things we talked about during revaluation year is the hope of every municipality in the county is that the tax rate will remain for years. You do your best to set your tax rate so that it doesn't have to change. So we are in, um, the second year. Uh, this budget that we're working out for FY twenty-six will be the third year. And then the following budget after that is what we'll be working with revaluation next year. If there were four years in the past. Some of the inflationary forces, yes, inflation still is. The cumulative price change from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five is pretty big. Basically, what that means is that everything that you buy has gone up all over the quarter. Um, and that is, this is a number from across the economy. Uh, there are some areas, um, that fall excellently, uh, where this is much higher, it's twenty-two percent. Since May twenty twenty-three, wage growth has led inflation by a factor of three to one. What this means is we had a lag in the beginning of the inflationary portion of twenty twenty-one, where you did not see wage growth. Wage growth has skyrocketed as we've realized that you can't, there's been really two factors that are leading to this level. Uh, number one is people realizing that folks can't survive on what they were making in twenty twenty in the environment. But the other thing is, is that we are now all fighting for something. And that cohort is becoming smaller. As the boomers retire out, one of the largest, uh, generations in our nation's history, um, Gen X, my generation, and millennials behind us, um, we are much smaller. So if you had every able-bodied working person in our generation and the women of generation willing to work, which we all know is not the case, you're not going to be able to fill all the jobs that the boomers delivered. And so what that has created is a situation where we're basically fighting other people for limited resources when it comes to work. And it's one of the reasons that, and we'll be coming back to you later. Uh, we haven't settled on the number in dealing with personnel costs this year, but, uh, other, other municipalities are already settling on theirs and it's, it's, we will, we'll come back with that. Uh, increases have stabilized. I'm sure you've seen that. About one dollar in twenty twenty is now worth a dollar twenty-two. Okay. Over the course of this year and next year, the city will take on substantial debt service within the general fund. We'll also be taking on some debt service within the water service fund. We'll talk about that in that update next month. Um, we spent last summer years using transfers, um, to capital projects or reserve for his item as a placeholder within the budget. The goal being that by the time we took this debt off, that debt service was not new expenditures completely in it. Didn't have you, excuse me. As how passive debt subs often issue around three, three each year, the less new debt is added. City's already taken on a first-year debt service for five hundred for public services capital fund. That first-year debt service, which will be included in this budget, will hundred one thousand four hundred seventy-two dollars. Every year for the next ten years, they'll go down. Uh, we also will be looking into recommendations for using the monies that have been put in capital return for those two to pay principal down, uh, at the beginning to shorten that timeline, um, as we add all debt for other property. Uh, we did have our initial meeting with Ed's construction, being the church manager at risk for the public services facility. Um, the original, um, total for the public services facility was seven point three million. Um, we knew that it was going to be something that, uh, you know, the initial cost estimates are never what we do to deal with our own engineers and not the production. Um, we have been able with public services assistance to buy units here aside from seven point three million to approximately six point two million. Assuming the six percent interest rate, which I sincerely hope will be lower than that, but worst case scenario, that's that. Uh, we require first-year debt service payment of three hundred thirty-seven thousand four hundred dollars in the general fund in addition to the current debt service for the previous semester. None of that service will be following this one year will be approximately four hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred seventeen. That includes the apparatus plus the public services facility in one time. So if you'll pay for the apparatus in the budget we're working on now, the funding for the public services building will follow in through next year. Next, next season. Like I said, over the course of last few years, uh, city council has put two thousand, two hundred thousand per year for each fund and project reserve for this edition. With the need to do that, no longer existing, this creates a two hundred thousand dollar cushion from the budget. That's sitting below. So that's that four thirty-eight, five seventeen in two years. You're assuming you've already got a placeholder two or a thousand. We have to come up with two hundred thirty-eight thousand in new debt. So it at least cushions that blow in two years and that was our plan. Accident and actual debt service fund, this was the way we did it. The other thing that we, we did was by doing these transfers every year, we should have all of the soft costs for this building as well as a little bit towards principal, uh, available in project. We have a little over seven hundred thousand, we'll find the next few hundred thousand this year. Um, so we should have all that covered. Another major, um, item that we're going to be looking at in this year's budget is the final, uh, amount for the International Rail Park roadway the city will need to consider. Another four hundred thousand investment in roadway project for unassigned fund balance. This is not something that, if we need the, the budget even year over year, this is something that we will recommend that unassigned fund by. I'll put us at nine hundred thousand on the roadway project, which as of right now, uh, appears to be our share of fifty fifty where it's all down. This is a bigger, um, fire department staff, and we've talked about this at all in the last several weeks. Uh, we are not seeing a difference, uh, since we developed a major purchase fall in the basic rates. There you see twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Uh, basically in twenty twenty-four, uh, we answered, um, sixty-four percent of our, where, I'm sorry, in twenty twenty-four, sixty-one percent uh, of our call volume by year was in the rural district. Thirty-nine percent within corporate lengths. Um, when you look at labor hours, which basically looks at how long were they on the call volume, they'd get there by seven. It goes to sixty-four and not ten percent. Thirty-six. Uh, we've talked about, this is not a sustainable rule of behavior right now. At current levels, the county controls about forty percent of the power. City put fund sixty, yet our actual calls for service over fall or off. Uh, we have asked for another inquiries from eleven, uh, two-two or point eleven two-two for a hundred to rural district through point one two five for one hundred, and this will net us approximately one hundred twenty-three thousand seven hundred dollars. One of the things we are going to have to talk about in the next couple of months is where exactly we intend to go if council intends to go with fire department. Um, we are dealing with a lot of pressures, um, for Saturday, I think we're going to. Um, we did some preliminary numbers today. And to cover the fire department with four employees twenty-four seven, which is what an O P A requires for a structured fire, you have to have a ladder of two engines to fire. But four is your minimum. Um, if you want to maintain a three rate, which we believe we're going to be able to do, some five hundred thousand dollars in part-time for that year. Um, so without the county's help, this becomes almost impractical. With the county's help, it's still going to face essential, um, uh, investment by the city. Uh, and so what we're doing is working on some to figure out exactly how to do this. We have gone, when I got here, we were five-nine, am I correct? We were at five-nine, we're now at forty-nine. And if everything goes well in the next several weeks, we're going to be at three across the board. Um, that, that's amazing. I mean, that is, that is phenomenal. The, the fire department, the folks working for fire department have done, it's still amazing, um, to, to get it safe. But it costs money. And, you know, as I told you before, we're a really small hand on the high school sort of fire department. But we have a really good fire department. And so, you know, one of the things that the council is going to have to kind of look at and make some decisions as to where they want to go forward with this. Uh, at the same time, I know in the next couple of years, we're also going to be looking at the transfer of spark. Um, we've got six option volts you would come accounting like to, we've set out, we can work on. Um, at some point, we're going to have to look at, uh, at least putting two people for shift. It could be an increase in two divisions for this part. So these are all conversations that I know I've had with members of council. Now we're kind of having it out, uh, in, in the open, so folks can just put it on the radar screen and know what's happening. With growth comes that extra responsibility. So those are some of the things we'll be doing. Uh, we did receive as of today, our increase for trash and recycling under the new contract, uh, the new contract, uh, based on C P I as of December forty-fourth. Uh, which is what's in the contract language, it was five point two percent increase. So we're going from, I believe it was eighteen seventy per house monthly cost to nineteen eleven, uh, using the seventy-five point five rate share to counter for the south. That's four seventy-five to the city and that'll be fourteen thirty-three per month for rent. And again, all these are just going to be in the recommendations, obviously council will have to approve all of this based on profile.
I know we talked about it in the past, but I mean, recycling is totally, no, I'm not affected.
It, it, it has. I mean, now, now you do see recycling is a lot less. And one of the reasons I've been told that, uh, you should, seven years ago, I got recycling and trash were very close to it. Um, I believe trash is at like eight fifty a month and recycling is about seven. You notice recycling has gone down, trash has gone way up. Well, because they're saying the front fifty to sixty percent of the recycle flow is going underground. Because it's, it can't be recycled, it's something that's contaminated, it's things like that. We don't have, we don't, we used to have to ship it all the time regardless of its condition and get paid for it. And so that's why you're seeing a lot of that. I mean, really, if you cut recycling, we're not going to cut that much out of the metric now because of how this is actually set up. And I will tell you that Newton did try that and they didn't stop the recycling. Politically, that was a very unpopular, even though they could show very little of it of the recycling. But here we're going to the recycling truck anymore because we have no buyer. They're going to the landfill. It's still, we, we spent a lot of years convincing people to recycle and it's very hard for yourself, never mind. Uh, we, we're going to go back to the way it used to be. Areas we are awaiting information on, obviously it was paid, it's all the folks that we did is what we've had. Folks around us inside of the firm, what, uh, what they're going to do and what we have to do to remain dependent. Fire out, out, which is, we need help in there. Uh, we're also waiting for our second year of mark three, for let us know what our health is here. Um, to stay with this, hopefully, for the, um, or at least nominal increases. All right. Very quick note, there's some capital requests from the department again. This doesn't necessarily mean it'll make it into a very competitive budget, but it's there, council must add it back. Um, but these are new capital requests we've received so far on the capital side. Um, Heather mentioned the message signed from City Hall. Uh, we plugged the N forty thousand for that. Um, I am, but she received was about thirty-four. Um, so we just plugged that in and it's the place. Crack seal in City Hall, part of lot seven thousand, that was crack seal and also repaid all the rocks in two. Uh, we've got some very, some good, we have a very beautiful parking lot and need to make sure we remain humble. There is the rail park transfer of four hundred thousand. Police department has requested patrol vehicle, um, sixty-eight five. Uh, I will say police is also, uh, close into their budget. One of the things that happened several years back was when we went to the audio camera cameras. The in-car cameras were deleted from the fleet. We still have some, they've worked on and on. Um, there is a re- Um there is a request in the police department's budget to replace the in car camera. Um the biggest thing with in car cameras, sometimes you just have just body worn. Problem that I have with body worn home one. Is if you're dealing with a pursuit or anything like that, you're not listening to that. You're gonna see the steering wheel, like front of the officer is a jerk. A car camera will always show. Now, we have a a pursuit policy that requires it to be final penalties. But if you get into one and God forbid something happen, if you want to have footage of what happened during that whole thing, then you're fine with it. Um so this is one of the things, and it's not cheap. Uh acts on the corner of the market and acts on those same corners of market and therefore it's very expensive. This is something that I looked at, so like the body worn cameras is a way not only to protect uh city itself, but protecting office from accusations that they do come to do. Fire department, um we are looking at repurposing a lot of the funds. We're not dealing with anybody who's paying this year for the two of the lock players turnaround. Um and those funds will be moved for the repair of the fire department parking lot, which it looked was cracks that I could follow them through and that's a big crack. Um so we're looking at redoing those, those are going to be the fire department issue. And then a transfer for lighter truck replacement of fifty thousand, council will be asked. Uh we've got several um, well, let's say a hundred fifty thousand in capital reserve for the current truck that we just bought. Uh we're gonna make a recommendation that some of some of that was thrown the lighter truck replacement that we added, this fifty thousand.
We need to replace them a ladder for, we giving you to do this now?
Whatever we do with this. Well, that's something that we talked about.
Well.
I mean, that's something we talked about. I'll tell you, the lighter truck is one one two million. Um so no more than that truck gets used. If you can find a good used one, all of them wouldn't be a bad idea. Then again, when we park it was very tight. I think that's something we just cut the money away and make that season a little bit.
Well, as long as we don't find a new one for the base days on part of the B D V that you got.
Yeah, um I I mean, I don't buy my own state cars from anywhere up north and I certainly wouldn't buy a lighter truck.
We do, we do.
Um but yeah, I mean, it's, I think we just keep saving money there and getting the time codes down. Uh recreation events, no capital out of requests? Public services, it's something I can do. Transfer capital reserve for a crew truck. Uh what this will do, this will replace two thousand and eight, if correct, crew truck over two year periods over the phone cash, two years loan cash. And purchase uh the secondary period company, that two crew truck, one is pretty, I think about twenty twenty three, that's me. Transfer capital reserve for public services facility, that's that last grant for a few hundred thousand dollars that probably covered in this budget. And also we'll run soft costs and possible ones. Soft spreader for the MAC for the for the big truck. And then is there a term by what we do, one of these, uh just to keep keep those work. Streets and sidewalks, like I said, the only thing that we're doing out of town bill or recommended from this point is a motorway drive turnaround. This is a new section of motorway that's off the street, the motorway drive everybody lives. Uh and what we found is both fire, you know, the public services and the folk don't have the ability to turn around. So this is basically we'll follow a number of intersections and track track. A hammerhead, let me say. Um. And just letting you know, if you were wondering, this rate of total for four years, six point two eight miles, sixty five percent of all city streets. The federal expenditure two point one. Um we, y'all have done a great job of catching up after many, many years of of lack of money. Uh staff recommended the majority of the M five one five point six funding, fire department parking lot, we already got. We can't use town bill funds, obviously, for the fire department parking lot, we can't do all funds on uh polar streets and and sidewalks, but.
Yeah, well, it don't matter that street will be in.
I'm sorry, sir?
The street leading on to the parking unit.
Yeah, the whole, if I understand you, the whole thing was part of that block. Is that true?
I'm talking about the pound bill.
He's asking, can the entrance be used pound bill?
It was a named street and included in pound bill if you read the document.
Didn't know it was a named street, I'll check.
Are you that section of pound bill?
Yeah, if it is named street and it's on the Bible, then this is. So we'll definitely check out the street, so we'll log that. Um. Okay, yeah, we'll definitely look at, I wouldn't roll that wrong power.
The motorway driver, that's in the existing motorway driver.
Okay, when you say the motorway driver, you're thinking of the motorway to the south part. North on the right side. This is the one that obviously let me rename of all the good crafts.
Yeah.
The one actually does. I will do the same, this is a current one. Sorry about that. All right, so any questions or problems from council that you'd like to see? Uh like I said, we will do um one of these for water and sewer, that that's lots of things. And then probably based upon some of the issue or issue, based upon the city maybe maybe uh how the water is or siding with debt service. Uh we may add a short version of this to make it. Just as a final decision before we go into the main event, maybe point. We've got a little bit, little bit more working or a little bit more moving parts this year.
Is there any indication of the county's gonna look at this about full pipe and are giving any?
I I can't get any. I do know that the manager supported the last year in her recommended budget. She is hoping she's getting some support this year. Um and also she got a full black street. So if any of you have time to have a bit of information. Probably wouldn't necessarily start it now and build. Uh we have a new person that's actually handling our other works up there. Let them make their recommendation first and then I will let you know when it's on the call and kind of this approach. So you see, I mean, when you look at what we have done and when you look what we're gonna make out of this. Um especially taking other local folks as well. Um you know, the the citizen, you play off of stuff there, that gap, we was all that. To make sure these folks are safer at home, we both live in the city. And in my opinion, it's least critical that the council set up on city.
Yeah, sixty percent of our call on the count.
Was our.
How do you make, when you make sure that it's in the red? Get to the top of the talking. We are through, we're ten counties here for me and then back over to the north city.
Absolutely.
But you've done a good job of them this year, having the county uh department head, they grew the revenue, they've got a lot going on. This also places it in form. So we're building a new railcar and we along the town, if there's roads in there where E D C can show those off, the more large company. That is a, that's a game changer. It's the same way Apple was game changer for major.
Yes.
And we, that railcar, we, very little part of that care out is the same rough.
Any other question to the call?
All right, thank you. You took that lap then.
Oh, okay. Okay, we are now moving forward through the agenda. We have a few public hearings to hold. Uh first off, a public hearing uh to discuss the granite hill annexation. So at this point, I need a motion of the second, thanks in the public here. So the, that motion by Danny, second by Gary, they all in favor? Motion carries. Okay, we are now in public hearing to discuss this annexation request. So Bryce, give it to you.
All right, so this is the annexation portion that we're going to come home, so the vision that was brought in the center. Uh and it's a change related to the plan, so it's a very bad angle, then all that. And this being the annexation portion is between two pieces of property, one sitting in the water bar, piece of dry. Uh already partial in the city limits and after the survey that they showed up seven point two of four acres total. Uh so there are on the left, the current city limits in E D J compared to what it would be uh pending approval this and the thing on the right. Uh not certain of how much of the federal area is in the city limits currently. Um we have a lot of blockers of life, so it's a bit for some reason and I don't know if that's where those. The uh annexation. And this is the survey flat that was provided, they have. Net requirements by including the meter bounds, you know, later we have a list, we want it to be including, you know, this in the city.
But just make sure I'm saying that anything that is kind of big, but the portions of these property while we're in the city limits.
Right.
And there's a lot of shaded portions in the count.
But it's in, it's in our Arizona jurisdiction.
Yeah, it's it's an E D J, but it was, it was a town property.
It was a farm property.
It was similar to the other thing. Real estate, so. But we're inside the city limit, there's county property basically inside the city limit.
Well, this is probably no property. But it's, it's basically you don't, we have known the board over the whole time already.
Their tax rate is is held correctly.
Or at least our portion of that property, that'd be based somewhere with the current value to where we do it.
All right, so we are in a public hearing, uh now for any questions or comments, Bryce? And since we are in a public hearing, anyone from the public that can to speak to us.
I'm gonna follow that traffic along, Gavin.
Well, if you would, any comments you can make. Yeah, I would like to, just for the record, if you ask.
I was wanting to know if you could apartment, there are apartment houses, where is all the traffic going?
And Bryce, you're correct, if I'm wrong, but what I understand, uh D O T, everybody approves connections and. They'll connect the centennial.
They will, they will connect the centennial. Um I knew they would have connection to Oak Street, but later in the rezoning, we've covered, this is the conditional rezoning. Um and one of the conditions was that they'd be walking on that that section of the street uh down here, so it will be known as the traffic. Um so it's all gonna come in and out via centennial.
And D O T has approved that for for buying that.
Uh they will have to do D O T permitting. I don't know that they have done that. Not yet, but they they will have to get that, that street to be cheaper.
But to answer your question, D O T will, there is a process that D O T will anywhere they're paid and then on the way. Either get approval or not, but they're in the process of placing D O T. State, state actually regulates that. Do I?
On North Oxford Street. Are we going to have a bunch of traffic on North Oxford Street?
No.
Where we have traffic on North Oxford Street?
I mean, these these people were in and out of the centennials. I have no idea whether they're gonna go and live here on the centennial. But I'm sure you're gonna have an increase in your. Yeah, I mean, if they turn left and they go over the lot for sure, yes.
Well, we're already full of North Oxford Street.
Well, I agree with you.
We can hardly fit out in home, that's thirty minutes.
And 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 in C D O T, the state actually regulates that right. We don't have any jurisdiction. That's a state regulated D O T right. That that we don't, city of Fairwood doesn't have any jurisdiction with that. Yes, I I understand what you're saying. I very, I I.
Yes, this is fair, I would think. She said there's two, there are two ways in and out, but there's just clarify it's only one. It's all right, I don't know.
I think she's made in North Oxford or in North Port.
That's correct.
Yes. But uh but yes, that's the same one in uh Oxford, not say streets. I know y'all have spoke with them about uh signaling and I think based on conversation you've basically had that they just like it. That their their concerns were backing up on it.
Yeah, and that's a good part, they brought it up. And what Bryce is saying, there's two things that we uh that we. Uh be requested of D O T, well, one, we requested that they lower the speed limit on Centennial Boulevard thirty five miles an hour. We've requested that, we're still waiting on their answer. Secondly, we've made multiple requests over the years to get a stoplight where uh Centennial and Royal Oxford meet.
Right.
And D O T has denied all those requests.
No. Well, they probably never do.
Unless D O T allows us to have it, we never will.
They play in the states.
Got it. That's what they say. And unfortunately, we we can't just go put up a stoplight after, because D O T controls our right. And uh all we can do is make requests. I would love to see a stoplight there, but until they grant our request, it won't happen.
Uh and a lot, a lot of times what what you're looking at, what they're looking at is incident reports and uh traffic jams. Yeah, so potentially the more and more traffic happens, more likely the harder it can.
Okay, any other comments from that's in the public here? Okay, Jason, anything else for your time? Okay, all right, uh council need a motion in the second to close this public hearing. So the, a motion by Danny, second by Gary, all in favor? Motion carries, we have closed that public hearing. Next up, we have another hearing. So this will be a public hearing to hear the granite hill rezoning request. Um and then the motion of second, thanks in for that public hearing. A motion by Dale, second by Danny, all in favor? Motion carries. Okay, we are now in a public hearing to discuss the rezoning request for these same two parcels that we just spoke of, right?
But again, this will, this came before council began uh similar uh fundamental change were made and uh. Build up the density and uh another one zoning or rezoning change. Uh so what I've learned there is I've just taken a little more side for the bad and I'll pop through and and how long it functions. So this is for the the two parcels on piece of dry and Centennial Boulevard, currently B three and B two, uh each one being a separate. Mister. Uh request rezoning is now to only our one neighborhood residential, the B two has been scratched. Um not in business, uh this is still a conditional zone by the way, for the only unit development. Uh this will now be fifty eight town unit and no longer uh the orange falls without true construction, so it doesn't fit the example units. Included uh aerial and city level maps and this on the right is the future end user, so this area of retail, commercial, such as high community residential. Uh utility map, still showing that we have a long line through that piece of ground by the way and a two one to the west of that property. Uh going something down to Fort Creek. Uh current zoning, uh B three on the west parcel, B two on the east parcel. And then there's the left will be, well, that is only going to be restricted to all one and the hash mark for it. We'll basically depict that as a national zone by the way, that way it's more. Um but we, we have some E D Vs and and stuff like that that are probably not going to be going in that and it's gonna be how it'll change, so we'll see everybody. This is the newly proposed site plan. So you have the units in yellow that are closer to century old and the red, the red units in the back. Uh what the people are facing is gonna have to occur uh as an additional ten units we currently have. Uh pad capacity at that north coast dollar trigger pump for the four E units of those. Uh the ten additional units are gonna have to be phased until after that, after that uh that plant is closing and we're out of it. Uh so that would be in an independent day, there's buildings of the conditions that they cannot construction on those last ten units and all that until we have. Uh, so that would be in an independent day, but those buildings are the conditions that they cannot construction on those last ten units and all that, until we have. Here, we're aware of the ride up to some kind of their, uh, updated, uh, watershed information. Uh, show, current various areas will be shown with a hundred fifty thousand one hundred forty foot feet. Uh, and they're thirty-six percent low pond area, but they could not see without having had any kind of, uh, small V M Bs, will be a hundred twenty thousand one hundred sixty-one, so they are under that. Uh, open space will require, uh, twenty percent, uh, first subdivision, twenty percent, uh, land area dedicated as open space, either some kind of improved open space. Or, uh, just left alone, uh, that would have been twenty, twenty percent would have been sixty-eight, a little, a little under sixty-eight for, sixty-eight thousand four hundred foot feet. Uh, they're showing seventy-five, uh, seventy-five thousand one hundred seventy-five, so they're exceeding open space that that's required. Uh, last time we had a couple of concerns about the amount of parking, the pounds been doing that plan to show that they've extended the driveways, they've added a little wire. Uh, to house, uh, for sure, two cars outside, as well as the one car garage. So they'd be for a total of three, uh, they obviously won't be advertising that you should, you can, you know, potentially park on the other side of the sidewalk. In the event that you may block, you may block the, uh, the sidewalk there for ADA, but just note that they, they have marked that there's a control for another kind of parking. You know, for the purposes of hard view, they, they exceeded what's required, uh, and then they're adding the additional, uh, additional, basically, so. Uh, so the renderings have kind of changed, so this is the updated facade, uh, for these new units. And then we updated floor plans, uh, currently showing a great footage of about sixteen thousand one square foot, yeah. And as I think with always only going to be, we're just, we're just kind of, well, what, what uses would no longer be permitted in the new district, new proposition, because it's mostly going to be uh, commercial uses and institutional uses, even really the residential, but we've gone from the B three to the R one, B two to just R one. And then basically the uses that are committed in that R one, but not in the respects of all the businesses, and the buildings, uh, fair facilities and selected without their structures. Uh, just a couple of highlights from the, uh, the Comfortland's plan, um, the R one intent down here mentions urban residential development, generally within one quarter mile of services, as well as one quarter mile of services, so it's consistent. Uh, and the conditional zoning overlay, of course, this is all first conditional zoning, um, they are held to the site plan. Uh, the, uh, under, what's permitted in the underlying zone is permitted, which also shows that the buildings is sound on units. Uh, and council can place, uh, reasonable conditions are approved of. Uh, future land use that design necessaries area, it's a separate retail, commercial, such as high community residential. Uh, and in the Comfortland's plan, it says, I'm on your cluster, uh, the densest development within these, taking advantage of the zip code monitor, which, which, that meets this, this, this consistent with this. Um, so just running through the planning and development requirements and ordinance, uh, the higher areas are what's changed from last time. Um, probably, uh, P U D must be at least two acre, two, two continuous acres of this seven point one seven, a little bit more than that, uh, on the survey. Um, they are going to be large at the density, uh, they're eight point zero nine long units per acre. They're going to maintain under thirty-six percent of low pond area by having major where to maintain open space and have applying, uh, uh, enforce the fact that there should be limited additional low pond area in the office and teams. Uh, they exceeded the ten twenty percent requirement for open space, they're at twenty-four point one percent. Uh, there, there's no longer going to be a buckle apart, since it's all going to be R one, but they are showing some natural area that's not going to be touched against that Oak Street. Uh, Oak Street driveway, and then on the Centennial side. Uh, this is compatible with city development plans, this is the requirement of the city residential, uh, this will be permitting will require until we're on site. And honestly, they've provided a plan that means all eight requirements listed in the permit and all ordinance. Uh, and then under the conditions, we had the same conditions that were proposed last time, uh, just a few changes. Uh, removing the potential of a conservation event under the, uh, open space dedication, that way you can only go into an H F A, it's only made from that, that's going to somebody who can reach, in that community. Um, this, they're going to build the, the off-street stuff, and then we can supply, uh, no nation Oak Street, and there should be a blockade placed in itself, that, uh, traffic down on the Oak Street. Added, but we're finally about to, uh, blockade, uh, and then there's a section on phasing. There's both these, they're different conditions, uh, phase one will be the first forty-eight units, uh, going one, two, three, four, seven, eight, nine, and uh, being constructed after, being constructed after initial permitting phase, uh, and then phase two shall be ten units going five and six. Then up the construction on, uh, phase two until, uh, north, 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 well, pretty much the same information, and so far we're ready to do public housing. Yes.
We changed that, so so far we're prepared to do that.
Yes, we remember that.
It's, it's, the same thing as the case of one building.
And then lastly, we had this section, which was the charter, the strict uses that can be allowed within that community of development. Um, basically what I've done here is, I've just taken out office and service and used it wholesale, because those uses, we've, we've changed the underlying zone to just R one, so none of these uses that are taken out are even allowed in R one, so it's just kind of unnecessary to, to say they're not allowed on the R one. Uh, the only thing I add with small bit at home, because that was a, that was a, it's allowing R one, but sure, uh, but probably the ones these small bit at home are all. Uh, so now this would be for the uses that would be allowed, just these ones we proved for, so they're already doing, they're already placing, they'll be going on development, so that's not, not what they're doing, but um, it was more of that particular section was more or less near when they had that B two parcel, so we can tell what was in that B two also, but they didn't want that. Yeah, so I have on that, I don't have any questions.
Okay, we, we have today the phases, Bryce, you go. With the first forty-eight, will you start like at the back, and work your way out, or?
Typically, you'll reflect that Centennial and work our way in, that way, as we occupy, we don't have the residents are going to the stuff to be actually.
For a seat, sure, oh yeah, that makes sense.
But that's different. And, and that was a concern that we thought about, about, I'm worried about, that you're being attracted, maybe, I mean, there'll be, there are, there are two, you have issues and stuff, that you'll have uh, either with that or the work you're on, set upon, and you'd be injured, so, so you'll kind of knock that down, uh, that would be a important, you know, yeah. And that does provide, um, these residents on Oak Street, but what about, and what about the time before, coming up to, like, there?
Yeah, so it will be the ones that are closest to Oak Street, closest to Woods, and so.
Yeah, so here, yeah, here's Centennial, right, and there's that Oak Street, right.
Mainly as long as, it's like, damn, the others have spoken, that's all that, Oak Street is no cut through, you know, like the, the saw and everything talking about.
You probably asked all face first, and then once everything's completed, then we can, yeah, we'll be doing.
Okay, uh, council, any additional questions?
No questions.
If people get back to you.
Is the water going to be, will the flood flow off of that? Because what's, what's happened is, is you got down on flood plain coming down through all the time, and flood, flood down that hole, and then pour that creek where a rock's going now. Whether you have a dollar bill, you have one bucket.
Yeah, right next to it, yeah.
And like with that great big creek, it didn't go to a dollar bill, but that pool was there, they just put in enough water, the grain hit on the side. You're going to have faucets that will, you know, there.
So Bryce, I would refer to you on any flood plains that exist, or whatever, we'll see Bryce to answer that.
Um, to my knowledge, there's no registered flood plain on its property, or, um, at that creek, uh, the, the street flow, I mean, it's, it's going to go this direction. Uh, towards this, toward this corner, they're going to be using, uh, non-concrete hardwoods, they're going to be using shoulder pitch. Um, so you can get some permeation there along the street.
I'm talking about where there's a cross road. Now, it's, it's going to have to a hundred meters, and then pour. And they're saying that when they're going down, they'll put their stuff in, they just may end up, water from there, what comes off of it. North Oxford Street comes down to Buck Hall, and you've got Dollar Hill, which is down about ten fifteen feet over the valley, and then you run down into the picture, for all that water, and it comes from there, down under this, um, and we've got a real good way to come to the sidewalk, as, as we saw last time. Uh, but that's going to not be the sort of way of following, and then, yeah, everything, these are very common, they're cyclones.
And everything will be by, uh, city, it's all going to be, for, for the use of, insurance, street needs, the street needs strength, street needs drainage requirements, and then it'd be, uh, the, it's natural.
I was just worried about you, you're going to have all that water rolling down through there, and a real good rain comes on, you might have one of those.
Just the same.
And you got that, all the water coming out.
We'll, yeah, we'll be specific, we'll, we'll, we'll be.
Yeah, and actually, from the end, like, like you said, the engineers will all go and sign off on everything, give approval. He'll mention, or, you know, specifically to say, hey, pay extra attention to that collar about, yeah, whichever you're asking.
I was, I was talking about, you know, mine, but I was saying that when we come on and leave that road there, you better have a financial security here, and what's coming off that? You're coming down from Buck Hall, you got the water coming down there, and you drop dollars down, that's got, that's got, it's all going down into that same hole, that's all I thought it would be, all of them.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, any other comments? Okay, seeing, um, um, I need a motion and second to close this public hearing. Thank, alright, motion by Gary, second by Dale, all in favor, motion carries. Alright, we have one more public hearing to, uh, have this evening, uh, so I need a motion and second thing is into a public hearing. Um, in reference to our public services facility, uh, rezoning of that way. Uh, motion by Dane, second by Dale, all in favor. Motion carries, okay, we are now in our third public hearing, and this is, uh, will be led by the highest as well, and this is in reference to the public services facility, uh, rezoning, uh, very powerful layer.
Okay, so this is for A, city on parcel on South Oxford Street, currently zoning, uh, B two, R ones, uh, quest, they're, they're for strictly B two. Little, uh, ten point line by opens, uh, they're all, they're going to be down south to the connection with, at intersection border. So all these located in the city limits, kind of highlight of that, it's a hard scene during that, um, this would be regular, uh, you know, in the connection with regular, so it's all going from uh, behind, this is the rest and squad, I believe.
That whole risk.
To the, to the intersection, uh, and I didn't, uh, I'm not there, but we're probably only going to do any of that. Uh, the name you said, this means this area of retail commercial, such as highs, meeting residential, and the back portion of this, uh, designated as park slash open space. Which shows in, uh, ours only shows, you know, the proportional Oxford is, uh, B two and, and the rear, uh, is pretty close, it's orange, you know, this is fast paced, it's, it's. Uh, but back portion being R one, right. So, and again, going through, uh, permitted in R one, not in B two, so this would be the office use, uh, losses, uses lost, sorry. Ben Carroll, mostly residential, which is, uh, including, uh, smaller government buildings, if you have three thousand four foot area. And then initially uses from really. Let's see, top of the menu, commercial, uh, retail, uh, institutional, community, uh, best service entities. Look with the intent in ordinance, uh, B two, a higher sections of, of apartment, uh, newer residential areas, this is newer residential on the other side. Uh, R one, we don't have a general amount of services, and it's been tested in the first only, but, uh, rural purposes, then, what's it, it's going to be the public services, so the, the rezonings, make sure that they can, can give everything they can, they want. Future land use, not very business, this area is part, partially split, um, the, uh, intent for that retail commercial have, have to be used to go to the zone, because by off the plus, we're going to, we're going to do these districts, taking advantage of this and sewer service. Uh, but what this would basically do, if you, if you adopt this change sense, uh, it is inconsistent, and that's why I don't want it inconsistent with the big part of this place designation, so basically when you have your lanes, lane, complex plan, it's, it's guideline, it's not like we have, it's a little document that you have to, you have to, uh, abide by. However, wherever you adopt changes that are inconsistent, you should also adopt the change through your lanes. So, uh, converting that part of this place area to, uh, that retail commercial, uh, how do you do this?
Any questions for us? And once again, we are on a public hearing, are there any comments in the public that wants to? South Oxford Street, we're just, we're just moving public.
Yeah, all this is really, yeah, this, this really won't call the traffic issue, I mean, as you well know, the, the existing public services building up across the rescue form.
I know.
We're just closing that one down and building a new one down the street, that's all this is, build a new building.
And then the whole plan.
Yeah, I mean, we're building new offices and everything, we're just, we outgrew our doubles. It's going where it's going right now, I mean, that traffic already. The, the, the traffic that exists to that, of the current public services building, will now come in and out of that through public services too.
Same guy.
Same traffic. No additional traffic.
On the same street.
You know, whatever's going in and out of there today is exactly what's going to go in and out of there with this building that's done in the future. That make sense?
Some things will be sitting on that property, the new water works.
The, the new public works, yes, that's it, that's it. Yep, that is it. Any other questions or comments?
Alright, so council has the motion and second to close this public hearing. Thank, that motion by Dale, second by, uh, Dane, all in favor. Motion carries, okay, we have, uh, under new business, try to run through this as best we can. Um, first item under new business is to call for a public hearing at the upcoming April meeting. Uh, we just need to call for a public hearing to be held on the rezoning request for, uh, twenty-seven eighteen East US Highway seven. So council, this time is the motion and second to call for this public hearing at next month's meeting.
Motion to call for a public hearing, April, when we rezoning, we're going to, twenty-seven eighteen, East US Highway seven.
Thank. Motion by Dale, second by Gary, all in favor. Motion carries, next item under new business, also call for a public hearing, uh, this will be an annexation request of thirty-three oh one North Oxford Street. Same thing there, was the motion and second to call for this public hearing at next month's meeting. Motion by Dane, second by Dale, all in favor, motion carries. New item, um, C, this is proposed ordinance twenty-four dash twenty-five, this is the, um, finalizing. This is the um formalizing of the granted fuel rezoning request as we discussed in the public hearing a few minutes ago. Um this, we, we are trying to, if there's no further discussion, we will entertain a motion and second to approve ordinance twenty four dash twenty five.
Motion to approve.
Sorry.
This one also has, wait, we should be after. Motion to approve and present with provisions consistently in conflict with the plan that we're going to consider. City council finds the rezoning consistent, not within the land replan. And considered to be action reasonable in the public interest for the reasons below. City council approved the rezoning request. Recommended by staff, one, proposed development aligned with. Two, proposed development referred to progressive development aligned with the land used on one. Three, proposed development that has existed in buildings on site.
Uh motion by Dale, second by Gary, all in favor. For the public, uh there are sometimes we have to give some red tape to uh when we approve these. This is one of those cases. Yes, okay, I'm sorry, I see. Yes, we missed one of those. Thank y'all. First, we need to pass by the fifteen. Okay, I thought it called. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so going back to um new item B, we need uh proposed resolution fifteen dash twenty five. Uh this is a resolution of plan to clerk through certified, issue for annexation. Uh in preparation for the public hearings, a motion and second.
Pay motion to approve resolution.
Motion by Dane, second by Gary, all in favor. Carries. Thank you, Bob. Okay, now moving to new item D. This is proposed. I know the ordinance, especially it's, okay, that's still there in history.
What the revolution wants to.
C and D are here. Correct, but if you look at C and D and their headers, they each have twenty four dash twenty five. The second one's actually twenty five dash twenty five. So uh under new business item D, this proposed ordinance twenty five dash twenty five. Uh this is uh the ordinance to annex the two parcels from granted fuel. Townhomes. So thank you for the discussion. If you have a motion, I'll send it to.
Spread out and read. Make a motion to approve on this twenty five dash twenty five.
Okay, go. Yeah, this would actually do. Okay, motion on the table for approval in twenty five dash twenty five and second. Uh second, uh motion by Dane, second by Gary, all in favor. Motion carries. Now moving to uh new business item E. This is proposed ordinance. Forty four dash twenty five. This is the ordinance which will amend the official plan on zoning map uh to account for the new public services facility and rental parcels. So um. Is there a motion and then the, is it, uh, permit required?
Yeah, approval is supposed to be. Make a motion for approval and present through. Even though they're consistent with the compact plan, city council finds the rezoning inconsistent. Sue, clarify my compact of land replan. But considering the action reasonable, in the public interest, due to the reason why the city council is adopting a change to the future land replan because. One, there is a consistent land use designation adjacent to the property. Two, the proposed rezoning refers to high quality development as the land we call.
Motion by Dale, second by Dane, all in favor. Motion carries. And the last item under new business is proposed ordinance forty five. Proposed ordinance is forty five dash twenty five and twenty six dash twenty five. Uh these are basically ordinance is to move some funds around within the budget, uh moving some funds for uh. The spare sewer pumps. Area to the water and sewer small capital. Thank you. All right, motion by Gary, second by Dale, all in favor. Motion carries. All right, uh Jason, no other new business?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um so I will hear him over this time. Our senior attorney, do you have a report? And city manager report.
Just a couple of quick updates. Steph's model recombination plan with the development of Richard Deeds. That combines all those new video parcels that you guys saw for Buckser's. Parcal. Um the property changes are in the city and the Marleys. For fortunately land in front of the fire department uh that council approved. It's also been involved um with Richard Deeds. Reached out again on speed reduction and haven't heard any good back on, on that um state traffic engineer. And you may have seen it on social media, myself. Mr. Paul, Chief Thomas and Heather are going now to um to meet with our various businesses and businesses that this week.
Um, can I have some questions?
They what?
All of them.
We'll, we'll find some other things.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Is there any uh in words or less update on the uh. Truck stop replacement on.
They're replacing on a truck sucker property, although there have been several folks on package for truck sucker, but nothing, nothing to do with select items this year. Uh the truck shop is definitely a public hearings for next month. Uh they are moving forward with phones on that. They do need enough to discuss. Um some of the concerns and basically the. The biggest problem is, is the movement, they will move the geography that's down there. They're not only able to move. How far would they be able to move? Over twenty to twenty three. It's twenty to sort of keep, to move the footprint towards the sound. Because anything more than that, you end up in the draw. Um so it's really not. Well, ideally, um but there's not a whole lot we can do.
Don't you have a site plan meeting this week?
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Jason. And with no new business and no, no close session, correct? Okay, and a motion and second to adjourn. All right, motion by Dane, second by Gary, all in favor. Motion carries. Thank everybody for coming out tonight. Thank you.